Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting back together, uh, uh, at seven o'clock as we had our executive session at six twenty this evening. Uh, I would ask though for people to stand to have a moment of silence for those who lost their lives yesterday, uh, last night in Orlando. Thank you. We'd like a motion to approve the agenda for this evening. Second? Those in favor? Before you, you will also find meeting minutes from an executive session from the May ninth meeting, as well as our audit committee meeting that was held on June sixth. Any corrections or questions? Okay, motion to approve? Second? Those in favor? Okay. Uh, no correspondence. At this time, we have our public comment session, first one of the evening. Ask for you to, uh, walk to the microphone over there, give your name and address, so we can follow up if you have any questions that we need to do some further investigation with.
My name is Becky Florentino, so maybe you can hear me. Um, I just had a question about the bathroom policy. I understand it has changed with this, um, the current transgender issue. And my daughter's with me here this evening and she's concerned that she doesn't feel safe. Should there be, um, a male in the women's bathroom, so I wasn't sure what the course of action would be, should she find herself in that position?
Um, what we would ask is, she could come to one of the administrators in, is it the high school that she attends?
Middle school.
Middle school? Come to one of the middle school administrators. We will make arrangements for an alternate bathroom for her, um, should she so desire.
Okay. And can you tell me if this is for the showers also?
Showers, no.
Okay, okay. And will the parents be notified of this new policy?
If you're regard, if you're speaking about the, um, gender identity policy, it's actually not new. It's about four or five months old. It's on the website. It was part of the public meeting for a couple of different meetings. It was debated in public and it's there.
Okay. Okay, thanks. Um, okay, thanks.
Hi, my name is Kristen Anzel. Um, along those policies of the guidelines, Mr. Hicks, when a student comes to you, um, seeking this accommodation, uh, someone who feels as though they are transgendered, what are your guidelines? Do you have any specific guidelines that you have to check off moving forward to accommodate the student?
We have a list of criteria that are, that are listed in the policy where we will work through the process of vetting that particular student their gender identity with their parent.
Okay. And are the, um, students in that classroom at all notified, or the parents of the other students notified?
It's actually not proper for us to notify, because the student who would have a transgender identity has a right to privacy, just like other students who have a regular sex identity. So it's not possible for, we'd be breaking, uh, FERPA law if we made an announcement to the rest of the class that there's a particular student who's in here who has a, who identifies as transgender. So we're not, we can't do that.
Okay. And, um, in the case of a, of a gym showering incident?
Sure.
What are the, uh, parameters regarding that if?
Well, should there be a situation where transgender students share a locker room that is not their birth sex, then we have, we will have privacy panels within that particular locker room. If regular, if students who, um, have a birth gender need a more private place, the administrators will make an arrangement for them to have a changing area that's in a more private place.
And, um, for the student, uh, who is uncomfortable with, um, the gender neutral bathrooms, um, you said that, that that particular student is accommodated, the one that feels uncomfortable, for example. What are some, um, specific examples that you've maybe seen already, or that you foresee occurring, and where would they go specifically?
Well, we have, um, throughout the buildings in both the middle school and the high school, there are faculty bathrooms. Uh, and those faculty bathrooms have private areas within them, that where there are actual partitions and doors and things on the toilet areas. We've made arrangements for particular faculty bathrooms, allowed students to lock them from the inside while they're in there. We've, we've made that, that type of an accommodation.
Okay, thank you so much.
Sure.
Dr. Hicks, uh, can you just clarify that, so this policy, I mean, for, for a transgender student to use the bathroom they feel comfortable with, they have to be vetted by you first?
That's correct.
Or is it open, so they have to be vetted first and get permission in those cases?
That's correct. So they have to be vetted, there has to be a meeting with the parents, there has to be a check on the status of their transgender identity. And then there's decisions made and a plan put into place, and the plan is individual to the transgender student. There aren't many transgender students, so the plans are individualized.
What, what's our policy on, you know, a non-student that's visiting the building in those particular cases?
Like, for example, if there was an athletic event?
Perhaps.
Perhaps, yeah. In section six, if there's a transgender athlete participating on a team, then the section makes a notice of that to the rest of the schools.
But if you have an adult visitor, what would, what would the situation be?
Yeah. We haven't run into that yet.
We don't have a firm policy on that?
We don't have a firm policy on adult transgender visitors, no.
Okay, thank you.
We do have a student transgender policy.
Okay. I hope that helps.
Any other questions? Okay. Uh, we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Um, thank you. Tonight, Kristin Overhold and I are going to provide the board with a brief overview on the differences between the old annual professional performance review for teachers and principals and the newly negotiated annual professional performance review for teachers and principals. So the board has this presentation in their packet. And I'm going to preface it by saying there are subtle differences between the two, and there are a couple of different places where there are major differences between the two. But in order for us to qualify for state aid, the Board of Education must, um, approve these particular plans. We must send them into New York State. We must go through the review process, and it must be approved by New York State prior to August thirtieth of this year, or I think we're over. Or, oh, for the state, sorry. So, so the Board of Education must approve both the teacher and the principal APR plans prior to, and then it must be approved by the state, or we risk losing any increases in state aid for the last two years. Now, the increases in state aid for the last two years amount to a little bit over three million dollars. So it's essential that we finish. We spent a, a short time negotiating with the Administrators Association. We were finished in, um, early February. Uh, we spent a little bit longer negotiating with the Teachers Association. They were, it, it was a, a pleasant experience to negotiate. We completed it about a month ago. The teachers have ratified it. The principals have ratified it. So now it's up to the board. So, first thing we want to do, we have a chart. And on the left column of the chart, as you're looking at it, um, the old APR regulations are there. On the right-hand column of the chart, as you're looking at it, are the new APR regulations. So in the old system, it was based on a hundred-point scale. Each chunk of the APR was a point accumulation. There was a way to translate scores on a rubric, which are usually done in a one through four scale, to some number of points on a hundred-point scale. So twenty points of the hundred points in the old system was a state-provided growth score if you were a teacher in grades three to eight. If you were a teacher anyplace else in the district, it was based on something called a student learning objective for growth. We've been doing that for the past four years under the old APR. Also, there was a locally selected measure of either achievement or growth, and that was worth twenty points in the old system. So in the old system, forty out of a hundred points were based on test results for kids. In the new system, there are no longer, there is no longer a hundred-point scale. It has been replaced by a matrix with two axes. One axis has to do with test scores, the other axis has to do with observations. So that's one major difference between the two plans. The growth score options are still provided by the state. If you happen to be a teacher whose course culminates in a state test, if you're not a teacher whose course culminates in a state test, then you have to have a student learning objective. Where you would usually create a test of your own department's creation, or a building, district-based test, or it could be a third-party test, where kids take it, there's a cut point to determine whether or not the student has met a target score. That score can be differentiated for special education students or regular education students. And the total percentage of students who meet the target goes on to another table that's translated into an H, an E, a D, or an I, for highly effective, effective, developing, or ineffective. So in the new system, the state will provide growth scores. However, there was a lot of controversy about this at the state level, and the state has put a moratorium on using those growth scores for the next three years. So even though the state will calculate the growth score, you're not allowed to use it in the teacher evaluation system for grade three through eight tests. You still can use it for Regents exams.
Correct.
And that's what our plan is to do.
And there's also a moratorium on the use of three through eight math and ELA assessments. They can no longer be used for the next three years during the transition period, in addition to the growth scores.
So one way to read this new plan is, there's a transition for this plan for the next three years, and then after that transition period ends, it kicks into what you see on the, on your chart. Okay? So are teachers still judged by student performance on tests? Yes. But not from the state for the next three years. They must have an SLO, a student learning objective, and because there's a transition period, many of our teachers will have the same student learning objective. It will be the number of high school students on ten given Regents exams who get a sixty-five or higher in first administration of that exam. It's a real measure based on an externally validated test. It's the best we can do during the transition period. So that leaves us with the observation category. In the old system, the observation category could be worth as much as sixty points, or as few as thirty points. In our old system, observations were worth thirty-two points. There were two of them in the old system, both done by the building principal. And we also had a portfolio where a teacher would meet with their principal at the end of the year. They would bring their portfolio with structured artifacts. The principal would ask questions. The principal would make judgments about the conversation in the portfolio. That was worth twenty-eight points. That's gone. You're not allowed in the new system to have a portfolio, which is unfortunate because the portfolio was one of the very best parts of the evaluation system. But the state has removed the portfolio. Now, it's just observations. One observation must be done by the building principal, or the principal's, um, trained designee. So at the high school, the observation is either done by Ken Smith, Bob Caniglio, or Julie Matty. At the middle school, it's done by one of the three administrators. The second observation must be done by an independent evaluator. That means somebody who is outside of the building. It could be me, it could be Kristen, it could be Dr. Patac, it could be Greg Kazupski. There are seven or eight different people who are available to do it. The observation by the principal had to be worth at least eighty percent, could be worth at least ninety-five percent. The negotiated item was, the observation is worth ninety percent by the principal. The observation by the outside third party is worth ten percent. The observations are still conducted on a one through four scale.
Using the Marzano framework.
Using the Marzano framework. So hit it, Kristen. So.
Okay, just a quick question.
Please.
Relative to the observations before, one was announced, one was not announced?
Right.
The two being split, are they both announced?
The one by the principal is announced, the one by the independent observer is unannounced. That had to be negotiated as well. Okay? For the principals, the state used to give each one of our principals a growth score at the end of the year. They'll do that, but we're not allowed to use it for the next three years in their evaluation. So the principals will have the same SLO as the teachers do. It's the performance of students on ten Regents exams annually. Once the period of transition is complete, we will have to go back to having tests created by courses that measure growth for students at all three levels, elementary, middle, and high school. Instead of observations, the principals have visitations. I do the visitations of the principals. In the old system, I did at least ten per year. In the new system, I do four per year, two of which are unannounced. In the old system, there used to be a review of goals by the principal. Principals would create some goals, they would gather data on those goals, we would talk about them. You're not allowed to do that in the new system. In the old system, we had a portfolio for principals. You're not allowed to have that in the new system. In the new system, there's four visits by me, two announced, two unannounced. The length of the visit is at least thirty minutes, and the principals are rated on a rubric by, from a one to four scale. The average of that is then translated into an H, an E, a D, or an I.
So just for clarification, there are no goals set by principals?
There's still goals set by principals for our purposes, but we can't use it for the evaluation system.
Okay.
And principals are also no longer, um, allowed to use a portfolio? So there's no portfolio for the principals as well?
Click it again there, please, Kristen. So this showed the scale of what it took to get an H, an E, a D, or an I for a scoring ban. On state tests, the old scale was negotiated. So if from zero to forty percent of your kids passed those ten Regents exams, you would be considered ineffective. If eighty-one to a hundred percent of the kids passed those Regents exams, you would be considered highly effective. In the new scale, it's from zero to sixty for ineffective, from ninety to a hundred for effective, and you can see the other two areas. That is now statutory and not subject to negotiations. Okay? The rubric we're going to use is the same one. We use the two thousand thirteen Marzano rubric in the old system. We're going to use the updated Marzano rubric in the new system. It has served us well from a feedback perspective. The rubric has elements in it. The elements are strategies that teachers employ within the classroom, and they are judged by the administrator, or the person doing the observation. There's usually four, three to four rubrics that are chosen for every observation, and they are, there's a score on a one through four scale that's calculated. Okay? In the old system, there used to be weights, depending upon which section of the rubric and which element was being used. In the new system, there are no weights. Everything is weighted equally. The score for the overall observation, the scale that translates it, had to be negotiated within certain parameters. So if you have an average of three and a half to four on the observation rubrics, you're considered highly effective. If you have two and a half to three and a half, you're considered effective. If you have one and a half to two and a half, you're considered developing. If you have zero to one and a half, you're considered ineffective. Okay? Hit it, Kristen. In the old system, everything had a point value. You added up the points. You applied the points to a table. If a student had, if a teacher had above sixty-five, they were developing. If they had above seventy-five, they, they were effective. If they had above ninety, they were highly effective. That's out the window. The new one is this matrix that you see. On one axis is student test performance. On the other axis is teacher observations. You just take the H of the one and the H of the other, or the H of one and the E of the other, and you draw a line between them, and wherever you end up, that's your final score. So it's no longer based on points. It's only based on these labels. Okay? In the old system, if you were considered to be developing or ineffective as a teacher or a principal, you needed to have an improvement plan. And we've done some of these. In the new system, it's exactly the same. In the old system, you had the right to appeal as a teacher or a principal if your final overall score was ineffective or developing. We've never had an appeal. In the new system, you still have a right to an appeal. In the new system, I'll be doing many more observations. I was the party that people appealed to. If I conduct your observations, then I take myself out of the loop of the appeal. That makes sense. Then it's a panel appointed by me of three people. Okay? So that's the big differences between the two systems. One was based on total points. One had portfolios. The other one is based on a matrix. It does not have portfolios. Couple of other things. During the transition period, we must provide teachers with the score, the old way it used to be done, and the new way it used to be done, even though you're not allowed to use the old way. We need to provide that to parents as well, if parents want it. Seems a little strange, but those are the rules. And that's about all that's worth going through on that. Okay? So, we've duly negotiated. Teachers did a great job of speaking with us, hammering out a fair settlement. The administrators did. We recommend to the board that you approve it. Do you have any questions on the teacher or principal APR?
Yeah, I've got a couple. How is this better? I mean, I mean, from a parent point, you know, the, the APR had, had issues, we all know that. But this seems like, but at least I was kind of going in the right direction, Tom, you know? Having some kind of accountability, some way we can, we can judge something. And now it seems like we took all the, from my perspective, we made it toothless. Took a step back and, and, you know, now it's kind of, it's, you know, the observation's ninety percent. To me, it sound, you tell, I'm sorry, my, my question to you is how, in your opinion, how is this better, or it isn't? Or how, how are we ensuring that, you know, our students are getting, you know, quality teachers? And that, you know, that we're, we're holding teachers accountable somewhat for, for trying good jobs?
So that's a great question. So I'm going to separate feedback to teachers, helping them become more expert in their practice, and holding people accountable, from the transition years of the evaluation system. There were groups of people across the state who felt like the old APR was unfair and had unfair biases built into it. And they have lobbied, and they essentially have won the day because the legislatures have written this into law. So in spite of complying with the law, our principals still have, um, the responsibility to make sure that teachers get feedback on their performance. So even if it doesn't happen within the context of an evaluation system, the feedback will be there. And the, the really good part of this is, there's more principals in more classrooms more often than ever before. That has happened over the past four years.
Principals know, in my opinion, I think they have a pretty good handle on who's doing their job?
Yeah.
And then who needs to improve in it. So what have we given them, you know, to back them up in those kind of situations?
Right. Well, we have a system, the observation portion of the system is essentially the same, and it works. We have a database with almost eight thousand observation points over the past five years. We have all of the principals listed in it, and the average scores that they've given to teachers over that time. We've analyzed it. We have inter-rater reliability between our principal groups. The other thing we have in Clarence is, we have large pockets of excellent teachers. They're excellent, and they earn high points because they deserve to earn high points. However, when a teacher needs feedback that something isn't working as well as it can, that also has proven out to be holding true in the system, and we have the data to back it up that it's been done. Now, it will be very difficult for a teacher to be rated as ineffective in this transition year stuff. But there was large questions as to whether or not the state was creating a score for growth in a way that was valid and reliable. I got to tell you, I questioned it myself.
Oh, I think we all do.
Yeah, I, I didn't think that the state score that was provided was a realistic indicator of growth for students, even though our teachers did very well. So they have to get that piece right before it can be used in the evaluation system. The student test scores are the things that are on hold. The observation piece is still there, and it still works in the way that it's supposed to work. And if a teacher is not progressing and is not becoming more expert in their practice, then we have a responsibility to continue to work with that teacher. We don't want it to be punitive anyway.
No.
It's not a, you know, carrot and stick thing for us.
Well, it's about the kids, though.
That's right.
My, my, my children have had some outstanding teachers. But they've had one or two that haven't been, you know, where they've had to go get the notes from another class to pass that class. I think the point is, we want, we would like a system that gives our principals the opportunity to, to work with those people.
Yeah.
And hope, hope this hasn't been that.
I don't know whether this new one takes a step forward on that or a step backward. And I won't know until we finish it for the next year. But it's a fair question. But I can tell you that accountability is something that teachers want. Teachers want accountability. Teachers want feedback. They want people to get into their classrooms and let them know how they're doing. And, and the very best teachers want it more than anyone else.
Of course.
So we think we still have a system where we can hold people accountable. But holding people accountable to test results that might not be valid and reliable isn't a positive thing. So this transition thing is probably a good thing. Now, if they would have let us keep the portfolio and do some other things, that would have made it even better. So in some ways, we've taken a step back. But we're going to make it work.
What are other schools doing? Are they same sort of thing?
Same thing. Across the state, first of all, there's only a hundred and thirty-nine of seven hundred districts that have actually had it approved yet. Okay? So out of those hundred and thirty-nine, we know what some people have done. We know in Western New York, we're not unique. Um, the teachers will tell you the same thing. Many people are trying to get through the next years of the transition, downplaying the test results, upplaying the observation results. I wish there were more to it than just those two criteria, but that's the hand we're dealt, and that's the statutory law. Jason?
My comment would be, just, I'm not worried about a score, a requirement for the state, but if there are things that, from a managerial point of view, that the administrators can do, if these portfolios were helpful, and maybe if there's a, you know, a teacher who maybe needs more improvement, maybe they could do a portfolio, but not as a part of the APR. But don't take away the practices that were useful and productive. You know, maintain those things. Just don't make it a part, like the goals that you set with the principals. You're maintaining that even though it's not a part of, uh, of the APR. So keep the things that are effective and helping people to improve. Don't worry about a test score where large percentages of the students are opting out, that will skew things one way or another. I mean, it's, it's almost comical, the, the, the way that, that these, these things are generated. But keep the practices that are actually helping people improve and satisfy, what we need to satisfy for the state, but that's secondary to the managerial practices that are helping improve teachers.
Agreed. Thank you.
I'm, I'm going to ask you to predict Albany. So based on kind of this pause that's been put in place for three years, I mean, and your conversations with the folks in Albany, do you think that there's an appetite for additional tinkering? Or are, do we have, are we going to have a little bit of a, kind of a quiet time with all of this?
I think there's an appetite for tinkering, and they're already doing it.
Okay.
So there was, the Regents meet today. They meet, they met yesterday and today for their June meeting. One of the things that has come up is, how do I have an independent evaluator not assigned to a building if I'm in a small school district that only has one building? So they're starting to write some regulations that allow you to fudge the portion of the independent evaluator. See, the biggest problem here was that during the budget negotiations two years ago, the process came out of the hands of the Board of Regents and into the hands of the governor, where it became politicized. Then the legislature created statutes rather than regulations. So now, in order for it to change, the statute has to change. That means it has to be. That means it has to be a legislative solution. It'll probably happen in the next couple of years. But when it does, we'll have to go back to the Teachers Association, we'll have to collectively bargain, and we'll have to make sure that we're doing things in a fair and upfront manner. But yes, I absolutely believe this will continue to evolve and change. In some ways, we're doing this for compliance, but we're not giving up on our responsibility of holding people accountable for student learning. And we do pretty doggone well here, that's the other piece.
On the independent evaluator, you talked about district personnel, district office personnel doing some of them. Will the building principals be observing that?
Yeah, we're going to do that too, Mike, because we don't have, the way we figured it, even if Kristen and I pick up sixty observations each, which is what we're going to try for next year, and John picks up, let's say thirty, and Greg Kazupski does thirty, and Mary Ellen Cullen does thirty, we're still going to be short. So, we're going to have the high school go to the middle school, the middle school go to the high school, and the elementary principals will go to all three of the other elementary buildings on an equalized basis. I think it's fifteen each for them?
Correct.
Five in each of the three buildings? And that's how it plays out. So, the independent evaluator might not be a central office administrator, it might be a principal from a different building.
I guess then, building on that question, just from an overall time commitment from the building principals and administrators. I mean, before, the building principals were doing two, announced, unannounced, and obviously, I think all of us would agree, it was a good thing to start the process. But it was obviously a time commitment and a drain or a pull of them doing other things. So, now there's maybe a little bit less of that, but they're going to be now traveling.
Yeah.
More or less time?
We don't know yet. But probably more time. Less announced observations, but probably more time. It's to get in your car and travel to another place and hope that in that, you know, when you go into a person for an unannounced observation, if they're showing a movie, you're not going to stay there. You know, so there's that kind of thing that could happen, or the kids could be on a field trip or something like that. So, we think it's going to end up being more time. What we really don't want are elementary principals out of their building. So, we tried to make it so that they could do maybe five or six visitations, knock off the observations in that time, and really limit their time out of the building because there's no one else to cover for them when they're out. At the middle school and the high school, if somebody's out of the building, there's two other administrators there plus we're here. So, that was a major concern for us. Major concern for the teachers too.
And just the, that independent observation, is there a follow-up meeting with that teacher?
There's a follow-up meeting if there are scores of one and two. If there's scores of three or four and everything is effective or highly effective, then it's up to the teacher as to whether or not the follow-up meeting occurs.
Okay. So, maybe they still get some type of feedback from that independent evaluator?
Yes, it's written, it's all computerized. Yes. All the feedback comes from a computerized database that the teacher logs on to, it's all secure.
Okay. Yeah, to me, the independent evaluation, I think, you know, it's only worth ten percent of the score, but I'm not worried about that. I think having, you know, another person, another set of eyes on it can be helpful.
Yeah, we think so too. We think that's a good thing, honestly.
I'm disappointed in the portfolio section being removed. I hope that they will reconsider that.
Agreed. Any other questions on APPR? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mancuso.
Should we, quick, why is Scott, we have three questions, I guess, that, you know, my love is still doing. First, financial reports, there's not too much, it's kind of a pure opinion wise. I do want to mention that, to see a payment through the advisory room, they do a great job to receive probably two million dollars of aid in each year because of these stats and Medicaid that they need for us. Any questions on that?
I noticed like, some of these appropriation categories accounts were like, in the minus, you're going to be readjusting some of that?
So, what happens, what we're trying to do is give you both the month that they reconcile and the current one. Current one is unreconciled, correct it just before they get it to, you're going to have negatives each time there. And then as we reconcile each month, the reconciled month should all be in the positives. Next one we typically do each year is closing the books resolution. And what that does is allows us to pay the bills after June thirtieth that are required, and allows us to do mandated budget transfers, which is besides the reconciling at the end of the year. And then we also put together a clockwork bidding resolution for the BOCs and the National Joint Politics Alliance bids that are able to tap into now. Another thing that we have done with the bidding process is there is a new piggybacking rule so that we are able to actually piggyback other districts and other municipalities that bid it the way we're required to bid it. So, if Lake Shore bid a certain item and they allow piggybacking, we can piggyback their bid, as long as it was done in a timely fashion and we know that the school district will be bidding the same methods that we're allowed to bid on.
So, that makes, it gives you incentive to put it off and just piggyback on somebody else.
It's not a bad idea. I agree. The next item that we have is repair reserve. I do have one little correction on the repair reserve. The Board of Education's resolution alone can establish the repair reserve. The Board of Education, after a public hearing, can spend any funds in the repair reserve as they see fit for repairs, according to the guidelines set up by the law that I've given you. The only other item that did change, we got final clarification, is to fund the reserve, it has to be at a vote. So, whether it's a separate vote or a vote at our annual vote, to fund it is by moving money from an unallocated fund balance to the reserve, that does require voter approval.
Now, is that calculated in, sorry, public voter approval?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Now, this, like this, you know, like when we get audited for our, you know, reserve funds, would this be calculated as part of that? And then why, why have a separate one and why not just keep it in the general fund if it doesn't necessarily help us in that calculation?
No, it does help us in that calculation. So, if we move for voter approval, so many dollars over to the reserve, then it's not unallocated anymore. It's a reserve. And certainly, with the big capital project that we just have underway, we don't need those repairs immediately. But, for the future, especially with the artificial turf, we know that it has a shelf life. And if we start, don't start putting money away into a reserve, then it'll be very difficult down the road, have to have another vote and all of that. Where if we move money there a little bit each year, it certainly would help that process.
So, just to clarify then, when you're talking about voter approval, are you talking about voter approval in the context of a budget? Or would it be a separate line item similar to what we would do with a bond?
It would be a separate line item, asking the community to move X number of dollars from an unallocated fund balance to this reserve.
Yeah, because that, that's interesting, because then, it, even though it's not necessarily new money in the sense of what we would consider a bond would be, it could be very easily misunderstood by the community. So, I, it's interesting, because I think that there is a lot of value in having a reserve fund, but one of the primary arguments is, you're, you don't have to essentially put it up and say, hey, we want to borrow money to make these repairs, X, Y, and Z. But the, from the viewpoint of, you know, the general, you know, understanding, yeah, they're not really going to look very different.
Certainly, it would take a lot of information to be put out to the community for a good explanation.
Now, we're talking about like, to repair, to replace the, in ten years' time, replacing the turf, it's a couple million dollars?
Using a three percent per year inflation factor for the product, going out ten years, we anticipate right about three million dollars to replace all of the three fields that we're doing.
So, we would be talking about putting away about three hundred grand a year?
Yes.
What you're saying.
Now, bec- sorry, go ahead. Because this is voter approved, would that be eligible for state aid without further approval of capital expense?
No, so what we would, because it's a repair, it's not really going to be aidable. So, we're not going to go, we would sort of get approval to do work, depending on what the work was. You know, if we, if we had a reserve and we were going to do a ten thousand dollar plumbing repair, we don't need any special architect stamp and state approval. If we were to replace three million dollars with the artificial turf, we would.
And the reserve that would be, what you're talking about, Jason, is called a capital reserve. And then you could put money in as a local share towards the building project, and then you can be aided. But not on this repair reserve. Unless we put it in for a project and said, we're going to use it as a local share, which isn't really the function of a repair. It'd be the capital reserve, it could be piggybacked.
Couldn't you roll in the turf repairs with a capital project?
Might be able to down the road. And that would be something that...
But then you wouldn't be able to use the repair fund, would you?
I think you're...
Well, you could transfer from, could you transfer from a repair fund to another fund if you needed to at some point?
Certainly, if you put a vote out for, ten years from now for a capital project, and part of that was to replace all of that, part of that was, would be to use X number of dollars from the repair reserve and move it over.
Right.
And certainly, we did something similar with this capital project. We used three million dollars. But it wasn't officially in a reserve, and this is a much cleaner method to do that. So, we're asking us to just establish a reserve, and then certainly, at the board's discretion, if it goes, could fund it. The next item that we have is the standard borrowing resolution. On May seventeenth, the community approved eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the purchase of nine buses. And this is the resolution that allows us to borrow that money and buy the buses. Next item, we have six of our normal bids out here. Let me say, five of our normal bids, and the auditorium supplies is in addition to what we typically do. And we had touched base on that, that these much-needed sound improvements to the auditorium at the high school are something that we would like to use pre-purchase monies for. The, we do, subsequent to this, give you the list of musical instruments. Janitorial supplies are ones that we see every single year. Copier maintenance agreements, refuse, and security. Again, are items that we typically like to pre-purchase encumber by the end of the year if we're able to.
With regards to the security, I know that there's at least some money in one of the plans to put additional cameras and things in. Is this...
This is simply...
...element going to change that in any way? Or rather, I guess the other way around. Putting in the new things, is that going to change this for next year or even for this?
We've already cut back the roving security. And I think what we want to do is keep it this way. You know, this is roving security from basically midnight till four or five in the morning. And in addition to a spot check of the buildings, they actually go into the buildings and check the freezing units and the boilers. So, it is a big help for us, where they would catch a big walk-in freezer or cooler that might have died and we could get it repaired before everything is lost.
Okay. Just to, for clarification for Mr. Scott, the cameras will be in the high school, in Sheridan Hill, in Harris Hill, as a result, at the end of the summer, as a result of the profit, inside and outside.
The refuse and the security bid is a bid, those are things that can be tagged on to a state bid, and we jointly bid them with Lancaster, DePew, and Alden.
On the, could you just talk around the determination of the specs? We talked about the janitorial bid as an example, and I'll get right to the part of the question. So, you see, any number of the eight suppliers that didn't qual, or eight bidders that didn't qualify because they need specs, and it's, I know there's a lot more detail, but garbage can liners, garbage can liners.
Right.
One would think they're all the same.
Yes. So, certainly, the number of mills thickness are something that we know exactly what we need. We use the lowest number, the thinnest bag that we can safely with, you know, without it spilling and breaking all the time. So, those are the kinds of specs that we put out there. And a certain supplier might have a bag that is heavier, might cost more, or thinner, and might cost less, but doesn't meet the specifications. A lot of times, they will throw in items that don't meet the specifications. If they don't have one, and sometimes, what we do is, Jeff Moiki, our custodian, and people from his department, will take a look at the alternates before they say, no, it doesn't meet what we need. Next item is just accept the vote results from the May election. Certainly, the budget passed, the buses passed, and Mr. Boglioli and Mr. Fiskus were elected as school board members. Next item is, we do have to set the date of the reorganization meeting. We're recommending it for July eleventh this year. And also, part of that, we did give you the draft of the annual appointments for the reorganization meeting. Not too much has changed. One of the items on there that we had talked to you about months ago was, we no longer really have KeyBank as a depository bank. However, the medical claims for our self-insuring fund, they have a lot of requirements for that. So, they have a KeyBank account of ours, and until that is finally closed, they will be still a depository bank shortly into this coming school year. Last item in this group are some donations. We have a donation of a Wilitzer organ. And years ago, the Sheridan Hill PTO, three quarters of the funding was from the PTO, one quarter was from a grant, but they built the Sheridan Hill playground. That playground equipment is old and broken, we've already had to remove some of it. And the PTO now is replacing previously donated equipment that they donated. And this is phase one of two phases to completely revamp the playground at Sheridan Hill. I think that's all I had.
How about construction update?
Oh, yes. So, the project, as you know, hits all buildings. Last summer, we did the roof work. This summer, we're splitting it in half, basically. The high school, Harris Hill, Sheridan Hill, the bus garage will be done. And then, next summer, the middle school will lead you and Clarence Center. Right now, March twenty-fifth, we actually started the varsity baseball diamond. Artificial turf will actually come, probably the first week in July, we'll be able to get the turf in for that. So, all the grating and stone and everything is done for that, it's almost completed. The large multipurpose field, we've got some larger rocks that have to be excavated, and we'll graze the field slightly. So, that take, that's going to take a little longer, and that field didn't start until May twenty-third. Still plan on having it done on time. The football field and the track complex, we just got into that June sixth, excuse me. You probably noticed if you go out there, the demolition of the scoreboard and the bleachers is pretty much done. So, it looks like a whole new place right now. Everything is still on schedule, which is very difficult to say that at this time because we did just get started. Certainly, weather throughout the summer is going to determine how soon in the fall all of those areas can be done. The main work at the high school, technology upgrades, gym floor, emergency generator, all the security cameras that Dr. Hicks mentioned, that will be underway June twenty-seventh. Also, June twenty-seventh, the work at Sheridan Hill and Harris Hill will take place. Those areas, we're doing classroom unit ventilators, again, technology, cameras, emergency generator upgrades for both of those buildings. And we actually did start some of the work in the transportation department. Some of it is HVAC systems. This summer, we will have a new fueling system out at the bus garage. We'll have probably a week to two weeks where the buses will fuel at either Akron or at the town facility, and that we may have to park some of the vehicles... park some of the vehicles at Akron or at one of our other buildings for a while. Certainly, we think Akron is going to be a good spot for that because they already have built in security for their places. So everything right now is on schedule. But again, the summer is a telling time for the construction project.
Okay.
Now, I have a question on that. Have the contractors notified us of any delays because of the subsurface conditions?
The only, the only thing that is going to be a little bit delayed is the multipurpose field where the boulders there are going to cause us to raise the grade of it slightly. But that delay, because they caught it now, early before they really got underway, is minimal. It'd just be absorbed in the schedule is our best estimate.
I know most contracts have a provision where they have to give an official notification, and then there's a process there. And then...
When it gets closer, those requirements are in there.
Okay. And then, you know, are there any penalties that will be enforced if they don't complete the work on time?
Certainly, typically with these public projects, there aren't penalty clauses. However, if they are pushing deadlines, we could go to the bonding company. But again, it's not something that gives us a quicker finalizing of a project. It usually takes longer. So we usually work with the contractors. Public works kind of projects typically don't have those kind of penalty clauses, and we don't.
Okay, anyone else? Okay. Well, there's benefit to us just putting them all together, F1 through F9, or unless anyone has a desire to do each one at a time. Okay. And a motion to approve F1 through F9?
Second.
Second? Those in favor? Okay. Dr. Patak?
Thank you, Mrs. Quas. Non-instructional personnel this evening. First of all, you have two resignations, one for the purpose of retirement, an individual who rendered 23 years of service to the Clarence Schools. An informational item, various appointments. I want to mention one thing before I go through some of the appointments, is that I'm pleased to say that we have four individuals who are able to return to regular unencumbered positions. One guidance counselor, two elementary teachers, and one social studies teacher. So they're coming off the preferred eligible list and returning to regular positions. We also have the appointment of an administrator to a director position, teachers on special assignment, regular substitutes. I can also say that we ran the entire regular substitute list for the elementary education tenure area, and everyone who was on that list who wanted to return to a position this year has a position. So we have not exhausted the list, but we were able to at least employ people for this coming school year who are on that list. We also have the appointment of department and grade level chairpersons, whether it be at the district-wide high school or middle school level, the appointment of a mentor, the summer orientation program for incoming freshmen, summer work in various capacities. In most cases, this is for new students entering the district, whether it be kindergarten or others. We have for review this evening, the fall sports extracurricular schedule. We also are asking to abolish one position. There's a reduction enforced as a result of that abolition and a placement of an individual on preferred eligible list. There's the instructional leadership team for the 1617 school year. There's presentation compensation, summer curriculum projects, summer guidance, substitute teacher list additions to that list, and then resolutions related to the employment of three district office administrators.
I have a question. We have, with the athletics, there's 87 sessions for supervisor of spectators. What would the events be that they're, that they're attending and...
Various sporting events throughout the, activities throughout the school year. So for example, supervision at a football game would be one example.
Yes. This is just for the fall sports?
Yes.
And there's 87 of them. Is there a need for that many?
Well, there's more than one supervisor of spectators per event. And there are a lot of, lot of activities, lot of sports.
Okay. So would they have that at like a volleyball game or a, does every event have a supervisor?
Yes.
Okay. Then do they provide some type of report to the athletic director after that?
Only if there's an incident, I believe.
Okay.
Do they basically look for crowd control to make sure everyone's getting themselves in a spectator form?
Okay.
Did we talk about, I missed the meeting last month, so executive session, did we talk about the, on these agreements for the directors, the percent increase? Did we guys talk about that? I mean, I think it's, the idea was the same as the other administrators? So I would like to make a little more input on that. I, once you start getting to a certain level, I don't, maybe the percent should go down, but anyways, we never talked about it, right, in executive session?
Would you like to hold that over and go back into executive session?
No, that's all right.
Okay. Okay. A motion to approve P1 through P12. Second?
Second.
Any, all those in favor? Any objections? Okay. Non-instructional?
Non-instructional personnel, beginning with resignations, and you also have an addendum before you. And there is one resignation on the addendum of an individual who had, who has rendered 36 years of service to the school district. You have various appointments. Many of these are annual appointments of temporary personal teacher aides. But you also have the appointment of three key clerical individuals, and these are replacing people who are retiring at Clarence Center, the middle school, as well as the high school. You also have summer employees in the Buildings and Grounds Department, as well as throughout the district where we need to cover vacation periods of our regular 12-month staff or conduct other work that's related to student services. We have a special education program, and we have an individual here who needs to be appointed as a certified occupational therapy assistant, additional support in the technology department. And then we have in the transportation department, this is a complete listing of individuals. At this point, we did not have a definitive schedule of students attending summer school programs, those students who need the full 12-month program. And so we appointed all staff, and if they're not being used, they will not be paid. But this gives us the latitude to use whoever we need to use to drive bus or to serve as a bus attendant over the summer period. We also have the addition of substitute bus drivers, clerical, and teacher aide monitor staff. And we also have the appointment of our supervisor of transportation.
Any questions or concerns?
No questions. I make a motion to approve P13 to P15.
Second? All those in favor? Okay. Special needs and student activities?
There, this is very busy. Again, a whole workhorse, very CSC meetings, mostly annual reviews, a smaller number, 15, committee on special, or preschool special education meetings. And there are some high-cost positions in here that are necessary under the student's IP.
Quite a few there. Any questions or concerns?
When you say, when you say added costs, so we're hiring more people or...
I mean, high cost, so that for an individual student, our threshold is $27,000 or so. So when we exceed $27,000 in all services for a particular student, they're considered higher cost. Some of those students are in this particular packet.
Okay. A motion to approve one and two? Second? Those in favor? Okay. Board policy development?
First item is the approval of the teacher and principal APR plans as negotiated.
Any further questions for follow-up?
Make a motion to approve.
And second?
Second.
Those in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay.
Second item is our ongoing traditional field trip to New York City for the symphonic orchestra and the, sorry, the symphonic band and the concert orchestra would happen in March of 2017. And the kids get to play with the St. Louis Symphony in addition to all the other spiffy things they get to do in New York City.
My only question, I mean, the cost of the trip, I mean, for students who would have a financial need, my concern is that they always know if there's a way that they can get help. I know there's some fundraising that's been done. But to know that they're not going to be excluded for financial reasons, if the, how does that work with a student that might have a need?
You know, honestly, I don't know, Jason. I know that the kids fundraise, and that the more they fundraise, the more it offsets the cost of the trip. Can anybody help me out with this kid? If, I know that we can't use school funds to pay for a student on this trip. So...
Yeah, I mean, I think there would be...
I'm imagining that if there's a real need, the band boosters would step in and help.
Yeah, I would think there would be a way for students. But I would want them to know that, hey, there's a, there's a way, I'm sure there'd be a way within the means of the district, or individuals within the district to help a student like that. And then we just want to make sure that nobody's excluded for that purpose.
Let me find out, and I will get back to you.
Okay. So then, are we holding off on approving it?
No, I'm okay.
Okay, okay.
I just want to make sure that...
Okay. A motion to approve? Second? Okay, those in favor? Okay. Okay, before you are, a lot of activities and school events coming up in the next month and a half, for your reference. We have our second public comment session. Should anyone have any questions, we ask you go to the microphone and state your name and address in case of need for follow-up. Okay. We have had our executive session. At this time, I would like to thank Roger and Jason for their time and service and their enthusiasm that they've shown over the last three years. And don't be a stranger, and good luck. Enjoy your time off. And would either one of you like to make the motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn.
Jason, would you like to second it?
Second.
Those in favor? Anyone opposed? Have a good evening.